Good evening, everyone. Apologies to the community for our late start. We ran over a little bit in our closed session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marcus is absent. Trustee Weekly?
Present.
Trustee McAvoy?
Present.
Vice President Waltz?
Here.
President Lawson?
Here. Okay, um, let's see, I need to, we're in 4.2, report out on closed session from May 10th, 2024, item 6.1, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. We heard from the attorney and no action was taken. 6.2 conference with real property negotiators. Information was received and no action was taken. Let's see, 6.3, public employee performance evaluation for the superintendent. No action was taken. 6.4, RCTA negotiations update, information received, no action taken. On tonight's agenda, 4.3, report out from closed session on May 22nd, 2024. 3.1 conference with real property negotiators, no action was taken. So, welcome, everyone. See, I know that we have one speaker's card and I believe that's audience, okay. Given the low number of audience members, I think everybody here knows the welcome spiel. So, let's go on to 6.1. Changes to the agenda. With Cecilia absent, I was thinking we would pull 12.1 discussion of the board calendar meeting. However, if anybody is going to miss next week's meeting, the June 5th meeting, we could do the discussion both nights. Okay, so we can go ahead and pull that and we'll have that discussion when everybody's here. Any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on oral communication. And thank you for being here. We love to hear from the public. So, let's see, this is James Kang. You can come to the podium, you have three minutes to speak, and if you can turn the microphone on. Got it.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you, board members. My name is James Kang and I am the father of two students that attend a Redwood City School District. I'd like to bring up a problem in the North Star admissions process that recently became what I feel like is an unintended consequence of the implementation of universal testing. So, the issue that I see is that since the implementation of the universal testing, the North Star waitlist for admissions has grown significantly. And as a result of this surge in numbers, it's basically made it impossible for siblings to secure a place at North Star if they qualify after third grade. So, here's some personal context. We have, I have a sixth grade son, I have a third grade daughter, sixth grade son attends North Star, my daughter Evelyn attends Roy Cloud. Our daughter Evelyn tested in the second grade with universal testing and she just barely missed the cut off by, I think, like one or two test questions, which was a huge bummer. But, you know, it wasn't a big deal. We told her, you know, don't worry, you'll do fine the next year test and then we'll see what happens next year. And so, this year, she took the test again, she did fantastic, she qualified, and she qualified for admissions. But this is where things kind of go downhill because after she got qualified, we're notified that she's currently 21st on the waitlist. After talking with the previous principal of North Star, we believe that the 20 students ahead of Evelyn currently on the waitlist do not have siblings at North Star. Evelyn currently has a sibling at North Star, Noah, and will likely unfortunately never get in. We had a meeting with Ms. Kikos in February regarding my daughter Evelyn's admission to North Star for the fourth grade. We learned that, I guess historically, the current system of priority buckets is that second graders who do not qualify for North Star admissions, or I'm sorry, second graders who were qualified for North Star admissions but didn't get in, that they are placed on a waitlist and they will always have the highest level of priority over anybody else. And as a result, Evelyn will never have a realistic opportunity to attend North Star. And this is because there's 20 kids ahead of her and the historical attrition rate is really low and it is unlikely that 20 students will ever leave their school through the third to eighth grade tenure. Well, I mean, when we learned this, we were shocked. Essentially, after the second grade testing, there was no purpose in having her go through testing twice and giving her hope that she could potentially get in in a future year because there's essentially zero chance of her getting in after that first year that she tested. At the very least, a proper warning about this would have been greatly appreciated. This would have set realistic expectations for us. My wife and I, we're both busy working parents and this has definitely placed a strain on our family in terms of pickup, drop-off schedules, split communities, and investing in school relationships. According to Ms. Kikos, the waitlist is quite long, all the way up until eighth grade. And I think it's at eighth grade where the waitlist significantly drops off and only becomes like one because no one wants to take their kid out of their school in eighth grade just for one year. This situation really places an undue burden on the Redwood City community members who rely on siblings to be able to attend the same school during their common school years. After universal testing was implemented, it led to this ripple effect for families in this unique situation. So, you know, in contrast to other schools, siblings always have one of the highest levels of priority and it's really straightforward.
So, your three minutes are up. If you could wrap that up, please.
Okay, so to conclude, we strongly believe that we would like for there to be some type of policy change. We propose a revision to the priority buckets to provide a higher priority to siblings over the prior year's waitlist, ensuring that North Star families can have siblings attend the same school during their common school age years. I assume that this was the original intention of, as sibling priority is basically the highest priority at every other school in the Redwood City School District and it's the same for all the other school districts, Palo Alto Unified.
Thank you. So, as this is oral communication, we can't have a back and forth discussion, but I would like some clarification if we can. I, my understanding is that our policy on admission does put siblings ahead.
What he is referring to is there are siblings already on the waitlist or from the previous year, correct?
That is,
He said there weren't.
It is, that is not.
Wendy, do you have that in front of you? I didn't, I didn't bring that policy with me.
I prefer to read it one more time. If you don't mind, I can circle back to you.
Yeah, I think that, I think we need to look at that and circle back.
Janet and I are on the policy committee along with Wendy Kelly. We support her in that. So, we can certainly take your feedback and have a conversation about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
But she didn't pass the test in second grade.
Right.
And so, that's, that's, that's a real,
I understand.
That's the real brings all these other children up because you didn't pass it.
You're asking for is a rethinking of that policy. So, I think we would just need to bring it back to the policy committee and kind of look at it and think about it and then make a recommendation.
Yeah.
So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay.
Let's see, we are on bond consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. There you are.
I'm trying to see who we have on here. Okay, 10.1, approval of contract with, QKA.
And that's,
That's why they go by QKA.
Yeah, QKA for sure. Tonight, we're bringing approval for the facilities master plan architect, Quichalki Qualk Architects, otherwise known as QKA for simpler saying. And also joining us tonight is Jennifer Gibb from the Antel Construction Services, representing our bond program manager tonight with a short presentation about the process of moving forward with the onboarding of QKA and then going through the process for the facilities master plan update. So, with that, I will share my screen.
Thank you.
And I have,
Hello, and thank you so much for having me. Board President Lawson, trustees, Dr. Baker, staff and community, I'm Jennifer Gibb and I'm here to talk tonight regarding the facilities master plan process as you have before you, an action item to approve a contract to move forward with that process. So, when we're master planning, we always want to look at it as an inquiry and data-driven process that supports the goals for your school community. So, you really start in the master planning process with evaluating the facility current conditions and the growth opportunities that we have within our district. You then take that information, that's really the data, and you align that with educational specifications. How do we teach our students? How, how do they learn, right? And how can we align the facility improvements that we're going to do with the pedagogy of our school and the instructional side of the house? That then becomes a foundation of a master plan. Master plan is a document that will help support you for the next 10 to 15 years of facility improvements. There's going to be more need that's identified in your master plan than what you can do with the funding that you have available today. So, you then will develop an implementation plan that will help guide you with the Measure S monies and other facility funds that you have either through your facility funds and/or leveraged state funding that you may get through your program. And that will kind of be an opportunity that you'll come back to and you'll revisit this. So, you'll always be constantly kind of going around in this circle, right? We are always looking at growth and any other thing that comes our way. That's the highest level. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the process for master planning specifically. There's a lot of data inputs. The first one being your demographics and enrollment projections. We want to make sure that we're aligned with that as we're planning out our facilities for the next 10 to 15 years. We look at capacity and utilization. How are we currently utilizing the spaces that we have? And do we have enough growth? One example will be transitional kindergarten. Those spaces are by Title V and Title 22 to be 1,350 square feet with a dedicated restroom and adjacent play space. Do we currently have that? Yes or no? How can we do that in our master planning process and be thoughtful about that as we move forward? We always want to look at our funding, whether it's our local funding, specifically you just Measure S and Measure T, if we can get state funding to match that or any type of federal programs. Then you go around and you do a facilities needs assessment and you're looking specifically lighting, HVAC, what's the age of those? And we work very closely with your maintenance and facility staff because there's a lot of that information that we already have. We look at work orders, those types of things to ensure that we're meeting the current conditions and being thoughtful about replacement. That then put together with cost estimates and budgets so that we understand what's it cost for today and then align that with when we potentially may do it, that will come along with the implementation plan. And then the master planning process, you'll have identified site diagrams of your current sites with potentially overlays of these improvements. Next slide. You want to really be thoughtful about, in the master planning process, that we garner input from all stakeholders. So, that's our students, classified staff, certificated staff, your PTOs, parents, community members, constituents that are outside in our organization, not necessarily having a direct connection with us, right? Business owners, et cetera. So, the city is a very important member of that stakeholder group too. Want to align that we're not duplicating efforts with constituents' funds and being thoughtful about that partnership. And then also, as we think about growth in our district, how we relate that to development within our district of either commercial or residential development. Next slide. Some of the next steps in master planning that we'll be working with, if so approved tonight, a QKA would be discussion around areas of focus as identified in Measure S and some of the priorities that the board has, want to align that. Understanding all our funds available, not just the monies that the constituents and voters approved, but what other monies that we can access for facilities? Are there any unfunded mandates? We know we're solving a transitional kindergarten, nutritional support, energy. There's lots of things that we're going to work through with them to ensure that we bring those as priorities to the board for an opportunity. Again, condition of your current facilities, we want to understand where we are today so that we have a baseline so we can grow and be able to show and understand and steward that improvement with our community. Always looking at those partnership, growth within our boundaries, how that's going to affect our schools. And then really how we garner that input from the community, it's through community meetings, whether they're virtual or in person. We also do, with QKA in the past, working with them in other districts, they are very strategic in regards to surveys, community outreach that way, having either town hall or individual site meetings. So, and then always working closely with our leadership and our district stakeholders that have the day-to-day known history of our facilities. Next slide. Really, really important, I know I mentioned this in the beginning, but when we go through the master planning process, we will be coming to you through this process with more identified need than we're going to have funding for. This isn't unique to Redwood City Elementary School District. This is all throughout the state of California. It's just the way that we're funded in school facilities. And so, that's why looking under, turning every rock, right, to find all the pennies to leverage to get the most improvements done is what we do through this process. Really, really, another thing, like any type of partnerships we have anyways, we can get state funding, et cetera. So, that, I just want the board to know that and the community to understand that through this process, we will absolutely be identifying more need than we will have funding for. Next slide. Some of the things I mentioned in regards to development, as we think about schools, some, some districts are growing, some districts are declining. A lot of districts are flatlined right now because we have a whole nother grade level we're serving, right? And so, really being thoughtful about remembering, this is a tool for you as leaders to help guide you. It's a point in time, we're being thoughtful about the vision, being thoughtful about the data inputs. And it's also through the implementation plan, you will come back and you will revisit that. There will be priorities that will change. We didn't know five years ago that we needed to house four-year-olds, right? Or nutrition and food, universal food for all, like all of those types of things. We're going to be able to utilize this as a baseline, but they have it be adaptable for the needs that are specific to Redwood City. Next slide. This is a preliminary schedule. It's a little small, but if you can see it a little closer, we're going to do information gathering over the next few months. That's what's proposed. And then planning and community outreach and then review and finalize. So, coming to the community multiple times for input, whatever stakeholder groups those are, QKA is very good about doing that, as I mentioned earlier. But being able to put together draft reviews and/or project list plans so that we can work through that together collaboratively and then bring something to the board for formal review and approval. This has a timeline of approximately six months with a completion in January. There's things that we'll be doing in the meantime. This team will be bringing forth as identified high, high priority capital improvements so that we're not waiting necessarily until January to start any construction and/or progress in design of projects, but to be thoughtful about what those are so that we can continue to move forward and also put together a thoughtful plan. Next slide. And that's it. Any questions?
I'll just add a couple. Thanks for presenting tonight. It's great to see timelines for, you know, getting the facility master plan, sort of the talk about the engagement, the community engagement. I just wanted to ask just a couple clarified things about the selection of QKA, which I know it came from our pool of architects that we approved at the last meeting, but just who made up the selection? Was it the same group that made up the selection committee for this one? And then what was the criteria? I know in the board memo, it talks about, you know, the best combination of schedule, the scope of work, past execution on similar projects. But I just wasn't sure, like, were there other things that were looked at and evaluated and what other priorities were looked at for that?
I'll start. Yeah, so it was the same group that evaluated the architect pool. You know, when we looked at the proposals of the six that are in the pool, I believe, five responded to this one, acknowledged that this wasn't their strong suit. And so, that's why we have a pool, right? So, those that choose to respond to this project or any other individual project, right? Some will, some won't based on a number of factors. So, we looked, you know, quite frankly, we looked at price first, right, to see where some came in, some came in way on the high side, you know, versus the group that was kind of in the middle or grouped together. We looked at, obviously qualifications, all our architects all have done similar type of work. There's experience that was on the committee, both from Redwood City as well as VPCS who have dealt with all of these architects at some point and the work that they've done for them in previous districts. So, that was taken into account as well and the quality of the product that has been provided in other places and knowing the process and procedures that these architects normally do on an individual level. One of the strong suits of QKA, and Jen mentioned it, is the way they handle community outreach and involvement, right? It's actually phenomenal. I've seen it in action before personally. I've heard about it from other people as well and it doesn't waver from job to job, right? And the way they bring in methodology to discuss with the board as the board lasts admittedly, but with the community and then eventually with the board as it's coming for review and ultimately approval, where, you know, they use indicators of quality, right? So, they're data-driven decision metrics for projects. So, it takes some of the emotion out, like, oh, we want this new building because we want a new building versus, well, that building makes sense because it meets this criteria that we have set up and worked with the community about, right? And then you'll have a list based on data versus just, we want to do this and we want to do that, right? Because as Jen mentioned a couple of times, and we know this, this bond program was brought to the community as a three-phase approach, right? Phase one, phase two, and phase three, because we know in a facilities master plan, the need will exceed the amount of funding that we have, right? And so, being able to use some of these data points to not justify, but make the community aware of why we're choosing this over another or, you know, for some of the mandates that Jen spoke about that have come up, you know, and TK is the easy one to pick on right now. We have definite need for TK classrooms in the areas. They are housed on campuses that we need to look at. You know, we know HVAC is another big one that needs to be addressed and sooner rather than later. We know that, you know, our food program is, is starting to grow different legs right now and there's going to be a need to perhaps do something for the food program and child nutrition services along with just normal modernization. So, we felt very comfortable knowing all of the architects, to one degree, and other VPS, VPCS knew them all, all of them, probably by working with them directly at one point or another. But based on all of those factors along with their proposals, the committee selected QKA to come forward with this. And unfortunately, either Aaron or John from QKA were available today, they both had prior engagements for this evening. But they'll be back to talk to the board as well and to explain their vision of how they do things in their methodology.
Well, thanks for explaining that. And just looking back on the slides for the facilities master planning, I kind of was thinking also about how, when we first met VPCS, they told us, it's going to feel kind of slow at first as we're getting organized and get things together, but then it's going to start to accelerate really fast, looking at the six-month timeline to finalizing the FNP and thinking about high priority projects coming in. I feel like we're right on that curve right now, so it's getting really exciting. Thanks again for presenting. The schedule looks great.
So, I'm pretty sure of the answer to this question, but just for avoidance of doubt, this expenditure doesn't explicitly commit us to QKA in any way beyond the preparation of this facilities master plan, correct?
You are correct.
Yeah, okay, great. Selfishly, I'm hoping trustees will be part of the folks whose input is considered as part of this, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, awesome.
Get to make final decisions.
And then I'm assuming that the output is not just a very long wish list, but is a stack rank of priorities with a goal of working as far down through the list as we, as we can get.
Absolutely. Oh, sorry. Absolutely, there's different ways as we work through the process, as we discuss for prioritization. And then some of those are, one opportunity is can we get leveraged funding on this project immediately versus is it a deferred funding, right? That might help us in stretching our dollars even further. So, those prioritizations, the whole list is there, but it helps through the community input process of really helping us hone in on what is best and needed for Redwood City at this point in time.
Because having the stack rank in particular is really helpful because oftentimes, everything's a priority in a vacuum. Like, wouldn't it be nice to have an ice skating rink? Like, yes, but, right, so, awesome.
Absolutely.
And that's what I was referring to with indicators of quality and the, the ranking from that, right? So, we take some of the, what you just mentioned, the ice rink, out of the discussion because we need a new lab or new bathroom facilities.
And one great thing that I spoke about is it's a, it's a foundational document for you. And so, as you create these standards and indicators, you move forward next year or the following year and something shifts, right, in regards to a need. You're able to use those indicators to help you adjust to that more prioritized need as it becomes a priority. Of course.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. And I remember from the facilities master plan that we did about 10 or 12 years ago now. One of the things that was nice kind of to your question, and I think we talked about this, is that, you know, there's going to be sort of blocks of things. I mean, there'll be things at school sites and then other things that rise to the top, like the, you know, mandated new programs, TK or the HVAC or whatever. And so, it does allow us then, the board to say, okay, here's our priorities. As an example, last time, you know, and I would imagine this time would be the same way, like anything that's safety related, like that would take a high priority, whether it was earthquake protection or fire or, you know, protection of students on campus, whatever it might be, like that would take a part, you know. But that's where the board will have an opportunity to help with that rank, ranking. So, yeah, so it absolutely should happen. Yeah, the only thing I might add is just, you know, on one hand, six months seems like a short time or a long time depending upon where you're sitting. So, I would just say as much as you can shrink the timeline because, you know, our community is really asking for a lot of things right now. And so, the sooner that we can get to it, the better. But I understand that some of these higher priority things that we know we need to do, we can start to kind of pull those out. Other than that, I think it looks like a great process with lots of good input.
Yeah, my only comment on that, Elise, is just thinking about, like, the summer schedule, right? So, with our families on vacation too, that's going to be harder to push up that, the, the planning and design phase. And when I look at just those two, starting in August, basically, it really, really ramps up. You're right, Mike. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation. This is an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. That brings us to 11.1, report on the Panorama Climate Survey.
Okay, so tonight Jenny will be taking us to do our results from the Panorama survey from the spring. And again, just thinking about, we took it back in the fall, so it's a little bit of comparison so you can see the spring. Okay, Jenny?
Hello, everyone. I'm here again tonight for our yearly tradition of the Panorama survey. So, many of the, the result you will see tonight is couple de j'avou, like you've seen it before. The, the trend is pretty similar to the previous year administration. Next, please. Next, please, Anna. So, for those of you who only know how the Panorama survey works, I just want to quickly mention for those who are not familiar with the survey. So, the safety questions have four to five answer choices for each questions and the total percentage of the two or three highest positive answer will be used to calculate the percentage favorable for each of the question. And then it's averaged out to the percentage we get for each of the topic. Okay? Next slide. We have total 76% of our student participated in the spring Panorama survey. This participation rate is similar to the past two or three Panoramas. This participation rate is similar to the past two or three pedroso survey. So we have about seventy-five to seventy-six percent of students participate every year. Next slide. Here's the overall survey result in all the topics for grade three to five. Our spring score went down compared to the fall. As you can see on the right, the right column show you whether it's down five point, four point, six point. However, we still above the national average. As you can see, the national column where you have the percentiles. Most of our topics are green, which is on more above, except for school climate. We are in the second block of the compared to the national average. Next slide, please. For grade six through eight survey, overall, our result went down compared to the fall, specifically significantly on the student and teacher relationship. And then, as you can see, we are below the national average in all our topics for the six-three response. Next slide. Here is the topic breakdown by the topic for grade three, five on top and then grade six, eight in the bottom. Grade three, five, here we are at sixty-two favorite for favorite percentage. It has been like that for the past three spring survey. So you see the fall, we went up, spring, we went down, fall, we enough, spring went down, but we end up at sixty-two percent consistency for the three years in a row. For six through eight, the favorite respondent this topic has been declining and we are now at thirty-three percent, which is the lowest of all time. Next year, please. I mean, next slide, please. School climate perception for both grade three, three, five and six, eight group, they started high in the fall and they dropped in the spring survey. Next slide. School engagement is also similar to the the first school belonging topic that we saw. It start how high and it's go back down. And you can see that for grade three to five, we got more positive response compared to the grade six to eight for school engagement topic. Next slide. School safety is the only topic that would show the very small slight increase since the fall. We continue to maintain the good favorable response with our three to fifth graders at sixty-one percent. And then our six to eight grade graders, we hold steady at fifty-one percent favorable response. Next slide. School teacher and student relationship shows a big drop. And it's we are, even though we still have high percentage compared to other topic, but we are currently at the lowest compared to our previous year administrations for this topic. Seventy percent for grade three to fifth and forty-two percent for grade six to eight. Next slide. School rigor expectation have the highest favorable score for our three to five, three to fifth graders. And is the declining for our six through eight graders? Next, please. So we have a couple of question to survey asking for free write responses. So for each grade level group, we have two question. The first ones are what are the two things that the school did well and should continue to do? As you can see, the the word has like the biggest font is the one that mentioned the most. Pizza day is a hit for our three to fifth graders and they enjoy the theme activities that are at the school. Next slide. For the question, what are the two things does a school should do to improve? Chocolate, bad chocolate was the most mentioned to improve. So that may be something to consider changing chocolate vendor. Not sure, but this chocolate milk actually is the top word mentioned in the previous year survey also. So next slide. For grade six through eight, pizza is also a hit at the school. Many comments mentioned that they they like the good teachers on the list. And good teachers and pizza also has been consistent on the list for previous year survey. For the question, what are the two things that the school could do to improve? Food and dress code and bathroom, especially the bathroom has been on the past year survey also as something they want to improve. Okay, next slide, please. All right, here is the response by broken down by student group in all the subjects. Go across in the gray color, you will see the district average for the each of the topic respond. The plus number in green represent how much higher is the response percent for that group of student compared to district average? And the negative number in orange represent how much lower is the response percentage for that group of student compared to district average? So when you put two different grade group together, three, five and six, eight, you can see that grade six and grade three, like the starting group of, you know, of the lower grade of the group seem to have more positive response in all the topic compared to other grade level. Okay, next slide, please. So this year I tried to be a little bit creative by putting slides together so that we don't have two separate slide and we have to go back and forth, try to compare. When I put the grade three to five and six together, but I kind of fail a little bit in the six through eight chart. I forgot to include also the the group size. But to just to know the size are pretty proportional. They're not like ten in grade three to five and then a hundred in six to eight. That's pretty proportional, so we can still compare them. So for this part, the Filipino and African American student shows more positive response compared to other race ethnicity in group three to five survey, which is the the survey, the picture on the left. However, the African man group, African American group shows more negative response for student in grade six through eight, which is on the right side, where you see more negative orange color. Okay, next slide, please. Here is how the students respond in according to their language acquisition status, whether English learner, English only, they've been reclassified as fluent. Most of the responses are close to the district average, except for English learner group. In subjects such as school rigorous expectation, school safety is also a concern for grade three to fifth English learners, where you see the negative twelve. So they their response are like twelve percent lower compared to the district average when it comes to school safety. Okay, next slide, please. This is the survey result broken down by student with disability. This is something we we've seen similar to previous year. Student with disability shows less positive response compared to student who in general at, especially for grade three to fifth. Next, please. Family survey for this year, we have just a little bit over one thousand family responses. This is actually a lot lower than our participant participation rate for previous year survey. We were about thirty to thirty-five percent in previous year. We're now about twenty-five percent of our family participated. It's about five hundred, five hundred respond less than previous year surveys. Okay, next slide. Overall, our family's response seemed to be positive and it has went up in the spring compared to the fall. Next slide. For school safety, our safety, our parents' perception of the school safety and physical and psychological safety at school improved to seventy-seven percent, which is higher than last year respond. Next, please. For family engagement, family engagement also improved slowly each year, though we still very far below how we were before the pandemic. Next, please. Cultural awareness and action has been stabilized around fifty percent. Okay, next slide. For teacher and staff survey, we have two hundred and fifty-three responses. This is about ten percent more than we had before. Was it ten percent, thirty, thirty, about thirty teachers we have more participate in the survey. Next, please. For the, so for the staff survey, we have two different survey. One for classrooms, staff, which is, you know, teacher and then non-classroom staff. For classroom staff, we have good responses, though some of them decline compared to the fall, but overall we are above national average. Next, please. For non-classroom staff, we have received lower response, actually a lot lower respond, a favorable respond compared to the fall. As we see that we have higher number of, you know, percentage that go down. Next slide. For school climate subject, classroom teacher's result is on top, non-classroom staff are in the bottom. Classroom teacher has consistently have positive response while non-classroom staff fluctuate between the start of the school year and the end of the school year. So they start high and then lower at the end of school year. Next, please. Staff leadership, this is also the same trend. Classroom teacher seems perceptions seem to be positive about their relationship with the leadership. While not classroom staff fluctuate, they started out good year of school year, but ended much lower at the end of the school year. Next, please. Here is the staff family relationship where it measure our staff perception of their relationship between the family and the school. Classroom teacher perception improved on this topic while the non-classroom staff continue to show decline. Okay, next slide. Here is also the survey for cultural awareness. This measure how well our staff is learning and discussing about different thing related to race ethnicity and culture in school. We has been consistently below fifty percent for both our classrooms, teacher and non-classroom staff. And I think that is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Jenny. Questions or comments? Go ahead.
Well, it's a lot of data and Jenny, as always, I really appreciate that we have a data specialist on staff and walking us through all this, collecting all this and and presenting it for for the board and for the public. So I appreciate that. Wow, middle school sucks. This is really rough. We 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 hear a lot about the volume of programs and activities that we're doing to increase school spirit and school belonging. And I think a lot of the verbiage is positive and tells a good story, but the these these numbers are not really positive in that same way and are continuing to trend in the wrong direction. And so I think it provokes a discussion like, what are we doing wrong in our our middle schools to be in the zeroth to tenth percentile nationwide? And what are some things that we are planning on changing as a district to 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 fix this? Because this is pretty clear. It's a it's a problem. We're not doing well here. And that's and that's disappointing. In terms of the areas of concern, I I think that also brings up a specific set of things. I I don't think we're going to litigate chocolate milk, but I think on the on the bathrooms front, it's like, I think there's an open question like, is there more that we should be doing from like a janitorial perspective to make sure that bathrooms are clean and and orderly? I I don't know what we know about that. Swings was on there, like, what's wrong with the swings? Maybe there's like more narrative behind that, but there's a couple of these things that maybe provoke discussion about like, why is this getting brought up? Do students have a regular voice other than just this panoramic panorama survey to go and and bring issues to the to the board to say like, hey, I I think this category of thing is not being well addressed? And do we have the ability to respond and look at what we can do to to ameliorate those things? I think that would be great. Families seem like they're a lot happier than the students are and teachers seem even happier. So I think like there's 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 something that's going right with with the teachers at least, which is good. Maybe more work that needs to be done with the non-classroom staff. But yeah, I just like, I I want to know how we, this is great because the students have spoken. They've told they've told us what's working and what's not, right? And and they're telling us, especially our middle school students, like, this is not working. And we owe them a response. And that's obviously not something that can come in the format of the court discussion.
We have a, we were out at the middle, one of the middle schools the other day and with the new principal. And the new principal was, you know, definitely asking, you know, what's working, what's not working? And so one thing that she is going to put into place is a panel of kids, you know, to really, you know, have voice and how can I change things for not only for you to feel comfortable among your teachers, among myself being brand new coming in? What else is needed at this school site? So that's something more than you having a survey. And the other thing about the survey, half these kids care less about the survey. They just want to get it done and out the door. Sure. So I think there's more validity in really having those, whether it be a panel, whether it be small mini groups that come in at a time and speak to administrators and to teachers and maybe our coaches that are at the site. Because we heard yesterday when the new principal that was with us, you know, she was just out there asking and and she goes, well, I know what I need to do when I get in here. So that's one thing, but I don't know.
I I just want to add it actually is very similar to what we heard in the student voice piece from students in middle school specifically, right? It's less computers. They really want to make sure that we're engagement in activities in the classrooms is is key and not so much on the computer, right? And so they that they're actually voicing it. So through the the voice that we have, the student voice with LCAP, that was really came out really strong that we need to work with the teachers about how do we do more, build more collaborative work into the into what they're doing and not just being on a device or, you know, they want some of that work. And so they're asking for it too, right? So there's a lot of work to do in the middle school, as you can see. But also it's very, you know, thinking about it as I've gone through this, just thinking it matches our student voice and what the students are asking for.
So awesome that we feel like we're getting some consistent telemetry on some things that are wrong. How do we hold ourselves accountable for making those improvements and and changing the the multi-year trend lines that we see are like in a bad place and getting worse?
So do you take, and this is a concern I have, and other superintendents, we've been talking about it, the survey. Do we take? If kids are just going to do it to get, do it, get out of the classroom and go on and do what they want to do, is it serving a purpose for us? That's why I think the interaction face to face, the panels that you have, the discussions, the student voice, you get more out of that than I think this.
And and to piggyback on that, we do have, and part of the new LCAP and part of the whole SIPSAS part is really making sure principals are also having more opportunities to talk with kids through different surveys and figuring out what do I need to do? How do we contain just that we did is more engaging, listening to students? So part of the new SIPSAS, that's part of the work that we're doing next year. Some some principals have already started that this year, though. Like I know one of the middle schools, she does a lot of that, like their suggestion box through this. So again, we also are looking at questions and starting to revise. So we went through it as a team and looked at every single question and saying, well, what would a team, what would a third grade say to this? What would a middle school say to this? Because there are some questions that are very similar. And so looking at the similarities, taking off some of that gray area to see if we can get better results next year as well. So because there's a lot of questions that are very, very similar. And so really thinking, and what we, when we were analyzing it, unfortunately, surveys often don't get us to the positive acid-based language. unfortunately, surveys often don't get us to the positive acid-based language that we're trying to use, right? That's not what it is. And we were like, how can we phrase this in a in a different tone? Maybe we get a different response. Um we also have the California Healthy Kids Survey, which we haven't, that we still have to gather information on that does have the tone of it is much different than this one, but it's only given to fifth and eighth graders. So the tone of voice is better on that one um in terms of the selection.
I I I understand, but there's there's only so much that that can be used to excuse the results that we're seeing, which are measured on a nationwide percentile basis. And like the degree to which every middle schooler is going to be like, oh, I have to get through this stupid survey, whatever, 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 is going to normalize across like all the different middle schoolers across the country that are being asked the exact same question, the exact same way. And we're scoring very lowly on a on a percentile basis, right? So just what what I would love to see is like um i- i- in in action plan that that we have some visibility into that shows ways in which we're we're going to do different things and improve this. They include things like the the student panels and then some of the core areas of concern here, like what are we doing about bathrooms? What I I don't even know what the swings issue is, dress code came up, I don't know what the context of that concern is, but that we're we're iterating on these things.
Yeah, dress code came up the other day when we were when we were at that site, you know, it's just.
The um the dress code is that uh they say the girl have stricter, more strict dress code than the boy and they would like to the school to review that for swing, I believe it was lower grade. Um they want swing on the playground, I don't believe we have swing in the play.
Not all sites have swings.
Yeah.
That that's the problem is that not all sites.
You took chocolate milk away a year and a half ago, I'm just not surprised it's there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was a yeah. Yeah, it's a big thing.
Yeah, I mean, like, there's things, every every action has an equal and opposite reaction. But yeah, I was saying that chocolate milk was taken off the menu, so it doesn't surprise me to see that on the world cloud.
But the bathroom piece we can look into, we can look at that right. Quickly, the the piece about the dress code, that that is true there. Jenny, that is one aspect, the other aspect is, you know, how come, you know, boys have to wear? She's talking about girls, these kids yesterday, we can't wear this and then we can't wear that. And I go, well, did you, let's talk to the new principal here, maybe, you know, you come up with ideas. Why did that start to begin with? And was it a crackdown because and if it was, can we change that? And they said, well, she was, and I'm sure she will, she's here, she's asking you right now. So it it's, I I think it's more being with the kids, you know, instead of placing all these hard rock rules that they don't abide with and and will not abide with. So let them come up with some of that too.
I I saw brunch come up from the middle schoolers, maybe we could give them a win like what, once a month or something? We we do like a middle school brunch, I don't know.
Yeah, I would prefer the face to face. I wouldn't want to do this, baby. I think you get so much more from kids when they're open and discuss and.
It's true, like I I think that will give us richer out the inputs. I I I'm I'm curious about the outputs, like what do we do with that extra information that we'll get from?
We we just each site would determine what to do with that information.
Yeah.
You know, and then you'd go back to what you heard, okay, did we accomplish it? Are you, is it better now or is it just as bad as it was previously?
So I think at a board level, just making sure that all of our sites are doing that and are we're holding the sites accountable for closing the loop on actually iterating on those things and improving those things.
So I asked a few questions um through email and and actually, one of my big reflections was, you know, this is really useful to see, um but it's at a a district wide level. And so one of my questions was, you know, what were the difference? Did we see differences amongst school sites? And in the different areas, um Anna responded to me that you can see like a thirteen to thirty percent difference between school sites. So the answer is yes, that um depending upon what the question is, some school sites may be doing better than others on these different areas. And so I think the important thing is exactly what we just talked about is that at the individual school sites, the principal and the teachers and the staff really need to be looking at their data for their school and then reflecting upon that. And Anna did tell me that it will be reflected in the SIPs in terms of, you know, here's the things we're going to be working on. I really like the idea of regular feedback, I I agree. I just think, you know, regular feedback where they give you feedback and then they get to see you actually do something with it as opposed to a survey that comes twice a year that kind of comes to the board. And, you know, they may not know that we're actually using that. So one thing the principals could do is say, hey, I got this data, you know, we're going to make take action on it. So they begin to see that, oh, it is important and then maybe they take it a little more seriously. But I I do love the idea of just the regular feedback. I mean, if you talk to any middle school kids, they have a, well, any kid, they have a lot to tell you and we need to be listening and adjusting.
They were quite vocal the other day.
Yeah, and it sounds like, I mean, I think our school staff are open to that, right? And we're, you know, we're making some changes at the administration level and teacher teaching, so, you know, I'm hopeful. Um and then the the only other thing is, you know, some of the the um like when you look at some of the populations, like the N number is kind of small. So like one or two students could skew that. The other thing that Anna brought up with me, which is interesting, is that the test taken in the spring is taken at this very similar time as all the other testing. And so it's probably not the best time to be asking kids about what they think because they maybe already stressed out enough on the, you know. So I know you're going to be rethinking the the timing of that. And then uh Petrina did get back to me on uh the different questions and what's being taken out and added. And I thought it was a really good list that the team came up with, including when you looked at some of the, you know, we we did this a long time ago with the bags of questions and you're kind of limited with what's there. But I will say, some of those questions, I think part of the issue is that depending upon how you read it, you may actually be responding to the question of what do you think other students are feeling, not what you're feeling? Which is a different sort of thing because you might be super engaged, but you're kind of pissed off because you feel like the rest of them are not engaged, then you mark not engaged when in fact, you know, who knows if everybody, so so some of the questions were a little skewed that I think you did delete, which I think are good because they were repeated in other ways that were maybe clearer. Um and then the other thing I just want to bring up is I don't know what the number of school districts that uses, but we reflect, it's not all school districts for the whole United States. It's with that said, I mean, I agree that we need to do better, like we, you know.
It's a statistically meaningful stat.
Well, I don't, I don't know about that, that's my question because it certainly more so than if we just look at in isolation, but it has to be on the same bank bank of questions. And I think it's supposed to be like similar like districts. So what I don't know is what that N is. And we haven't asked that question in a long time, I would be curious, is it? Is it five school districts, is it fifty, is it five thousand? I I don't know.
And we asked like, how long ago was this formed?
Well, exactly.
Another question.
Because I I think they've updated their process because we we started this ten years ago, longer, I don't know.
Um I was on it my first year and this is my ninth year.
Okay, so yeah, eight or nine years ago. And so I don't know how much they've kept up to speed, so. Anyway, with that said, I still think there's a lot of useful data and clearly we have work to do. And then then the other thing is you also mentioned that some of this will get wrapped up into the LCAP as well, so.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, love it or hate it, I think that there's a strong signal in there that her six, you know, something needs to be done for, you know, in the middle school. Um and also the trend line from um as students progress through the grades in their grouping. Um because that at least we can see against our own student groups that that's been historic historical that as they as they advanced in the grades, they seem to be having, you know, I think it was last year or the year before, we would do the challenging questions in the LCAP and the one that was always would come up is that we're kind of producing a system where kids are enjoying school less and less as they progress through the years. Um and that's still repeating there. Um I think getting the student voice is awesome. Um and for middle school, I I still believe that having that that strong student adult relationship is probably one of the strongest indicators of how how well the student is going to do um you know, socially and academically and everything at school. Um and I think that getting the feedback and being able to have that reflected back, hearing the student voice, um putting that together, um I think it would be, you know, a strong step towards that. Uh it'll be interesting to see what comes out of it. I there's a lot of initiatives going on at the school. Um and, you know, many of them are, you know, around, which seems solely focused on academics, but I think that they have a great way of also trying to bring up the engagement there. I think with less the changing in the math curriculum, the the strengthening of reading and reading instructions so that kids could have more, you know, the the ones that need more intervention and help to get up to speed in reading can start to get there. Um, you know, I don't want us to forget that. Don't get me wrong, I love the um everything outside of academics, I think that's an important part of the school, but I don't want us to forget that the investment that we're putting into the core academics, I think is also the right place for being able to see an improvement improvement in the climate. It is a long trend um to be able to see those roll out. I mean, these take like five years probably before we can feel like they're fully rolled out, that we know what we're doing with them and how to put that in. So um, you know, we're in it for the long haul here, but I think that that's definitely the right direction. And I I'm glad again that we made those changes slash for this year, uh last year for this year. Um and appreciate all the work that the teachers and, you know, all the staff, um both at the district office and on the site are doing towards those. Um we're not going to see it reflected this year in the panorama survey. We might even see it counter reflective because of, you know, adopting to the new new way that that training comes. But I think that over the years, um, you know, we should try and correlate how that uh influences uh school climate um so that we can we can see whether or not it does have that positive correlation that uh I would think that we're hoping to see. But thanks for the presentation.
I don't have anything additional to add, I think you guys have all covered everything I was going to say. Um and Elisa, I just want to repeat what you said too, and and some of these just moved off of this slide, the um uh results by student uh by ethnicities, yeah, when you have an N size of ten or thirteen, yeah, um a change of one or two is going to make a big difference, so. Um I take all of that with a grain of salt. The overall, the panorama survey just frustrates me for all the reasons that we talked about. Um the how easy it is to misread some of the questions, how questions are repeated.
We might think you're giving it a high mark.
Yeah.
It's a low mark, I mean.
I actually did that when I was taking it, I went whoops, like they just flip flopped the way they were asking it.
I know, and you know, it was the best available to us at the time. But again, we haven't really looked what's out there. And now that every, so we actually adopted it before every school district in California was required to do a climate survey. Like now that's part of our like require, like every you have to. So there may in fact be some better, oh.
Yeah, I was just saying that we adopted this before, like we were ahead of the curve because a lot of school districts were not doing climate surveys. Now it's required for every school district to do one in California. And so with that, but you don't have, it doesn't have to be this tool, it could be a different tool. So that may be like, you know, staff, you guys are plenty busy right now, you've already made some decisions, let's keep climate. But you, you know, you may want to at some point, just as you're talking to other school districts, is there a better tool out there?
Because we've heard consistent frustration.
Right.
The formatting of the questions, at the utility of the data, the actionability of the data. Um but 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 let's not change tools because we're unhappy with what the tools are telling us, but like, but I think.
That's, yeah, that's.
But the the goal would be to change uh change tools to something that is going to be more helpful, more actionable and and.
Yeah.
Anna, remind me, did the um the classroom staff and the outside the classroom staff get the same questions?
I I think they do.
Because I remember that being an issue that um like some of our classified staff that aren't with the families, like say they work out of the district office, they don't know what the um family relationship is like, so they mark it lower. Um just because there's no, there's no option to say, I don't know, other than.
Um actually, the district office staff have a different survey.
They have a different.
Those have a different survey for the school survey for teachers, the classroom and non-classroom. The set of questions are really similar when it comes to like your relationship with leadership, does they listen to you? Like those things are similar questions, but there are a couple of questions in that that's not different. Like the questions where do you push your student in the classroom to to learn? Well, that question would not be in the non-classroom staff survey. It's it's a little bit different, but it's they have majority of the similar questions.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, but I agree, it's um probably time to to see what else is available at this point. Um not not right now, but.
Important, but not urgent.
Yes, yes.
Um well, we're hoping that with next year, the changes hopefully will get a better response because there were a lot of similar questions that were skewed. And for a student to read those, and like you said, is this one going to be a hire or not? So we really tried to go through the being mindful um to reduce some of them. While we have still to the family one, we haven't done the family one, but we did do the students, the student ones, they went through them very cautiously in looking at them um so that we can then maybe reduce some of them. She, we also have the opportunity to actually add our own questions as well if we wanted to, but they're not normed, that's all.
Anything else on this? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
You're welcome.
Okay, we pulled twelve point one, the calendar um for the June fifth meeting. So we are on consent items, there's a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we have no action items, so we are on to reports from board and superintendent. Would anybody like to start?
All right, uh let's see, we had a workforce housing committee meeting to prepare for the closed session tonight. Uh let's see, I did go, I think already, well, I mentioned this at our our um offsite we had, but I did go to the Redwood City Education Foundation, they had a a fundraising event and I went to that. Went to the Kent Awards, I think a lot of us were there for that uh to honor our mental health program, it was a lot of fun. And then the induction ceremony, which a lot of us were at nicely done by Nicole. And then the wine walk, which a number of number of staff and board members were there. And that was again a fundraiser for the Redwood City Education Foundation, sponsored by the Rotary. And then uh the superintendent advisory council, Cecilia and I attended that on Monday night. And actually, we got some good presentations on the federal program monitoring as well as uh foster use and unhoused. And actually, the federal program monitoring, I was thinking, I don't know if we need a presentation of the whole board, but it might be interesting just to share that PowerPoint. Has that been shared with the board?
Do not believe so.
Just because I know we've heard a lot about it, but I I thought it was kind of a useful presentation to remind everybody. I learned a couple of things that I didn't know, so.
What we could do is we could do it during our meetings.
Yeah, so yeah, so I don't, I don't think it's, yeah, however you want to do it. But but I thought I thought that was useful to kind of hear from Catherine on that. And then finally, the the biggest bulk of the thing, I did spend three days in Sacramento with the California School Boards Association, with the board meeting and delegate assembly. And I think today, probably you all got, there's a lot of conversation about the Prop ninety-eight maneuvering, which could be super impactful, particularly for state-funded districts, but also for districts like ours that are community funded because there's extra funding that we get. And uh the governor is basically trying to, what we believe, CSBA believes is an unconstitutional maneuver. So uh if people would like to advocate, um please do, I've already done so. Um we talked about a number of ballot measures that are um potentially impacting school districts. Probably the biggest one that we still don't have final language on, but it'll be a facilities bond measure. And hopefully, I think they're sort of trying to negotiate what amount that would be. Uh but the governor, I know, is supportive of it and that would go forward from the state legislature, state legislature. So we'll know more about that. And of course, Redwood City would be um open to getting funding from that to help cost share what we're doing. We talked a lot about the budget, um legislative, oh, this is, okay. So on legislation, uh there's a lot of bills that uh CSBA is reviewing on our behalf and advocating for. But one of the things that I just wanted to, and I I brought a few copies, is drowning in documentation, we have talked a lot about this in reports. So here's a list of just some of the state and federal reports. It doesn't even include the local things you might have to do for grants. And um we're doing a whole campaign on this and we're actually sponsoring legislation through an assembly or a state person, I forget now, senator, I'm not sure which now. Um but we're hoping to basically make it a requirement by CDE to require them to account for all the different reports and to talk, you know, on a yearly basis and say, here's all the things required, here's how we're using this information, here's how long it's taking school districts to prepare these things. So anyway, the idea is we're hoping to pressure them a little bit on perhaps reducing the amount of documentation uh to a more appropriate level. So that was actually really exciting and I do have um a few copies here, I'll just pass those along if you want to look at it. And there's also the policy platform for uh CSBA, which is always interesting to look at, which uh sort of account for the advocating um components of what we work on. Oh, and then the other thing that I don't know if I pass this on, but their CSBA just created a workforce housing webpage. Did I pass that on? Okay, and so the thing I just want to highlight for the public, in case anyone wants to go to it, they can go to the CSBA website and do education workforce housing. But they now have a list of school districts that are consistent. But they now have a list of school districts that are considering workforce housing and the process, like in the planning stages, under construction and completion. And the list is getting longer every day. And that doesn't even account for all the school districts that have been contacting CSBA for support around this. So it's definitely a hot topic that I heard about at the delegate assembly. There's a lot of school districts looking at education workforce housing, whether they're in rural areas or urban areas or suburban areas, everybody's having issues with housing their employees. So pretty interesting there. Okay, those were the highlights. There's lots of other stuff that happened.
But you, you already mentioned the Kent Awards. Congratulations to our mental health program. It was a great event. I was glad I was able to make it to the whole, the whole thing. Because I was worried I wasn't going to get there until after the dinners. That was fun. And the induction colloquium was, was outstanding. It was a great afternoon out on Henry Ford Field. Also, we had scheduled to measure you oversight committee, but they, we weren't able to meet, they weren't able to meet because of lack of quorum. But there was a chance to sit around for a little bit and just sort of talk with members that were there. And they had some good suggestions about how to make the line item descriptions more accessible to the community. The last LCAP meeting happened between our last board meeting and now. And we were looking through the different actions and expenditures. I think we broke up by action, by goal and, and looked through those. And then I visited Orion for Principal's Coffee, stopped by the library and the multicultural, yeah, the multicultural travel week. Yeah, I got, I got to visit, I got to visit Australia. I only could make it to one classroom because there was a break in the tour. It was Teacher Rachel's kindergarten classroom. And they were, I was shown around by Aiden, one of the kindergartners. And it was a lot of fun. Kangaroos, other marsupials, you know, crabs. He made a crab that he was really proud of. So it was just, it was, yeah, it was awesome. Fourth graders were in there getting shown around. So it was a fun, fun trip. And the Principal's Coffee was great, too. The parents there asked really, really engaging questions. And I thought Principal Winnie answered them really well and, and Assistant Principal Brianna. I actually learned a lot about the Stanford screen or ROR because someone was asking about like, is this an effective use of teacher's time? Like they're giving yet another assessment to students and they don't even know what it is. And are we just, you know, are we just, I have guinea pigs as pets, so I'm not going to say that. Are we just the guinea pigs? Maybe are we the trial animal for the, the exam? And, you know, it was just talking about how, hey, universal screening is coming. This is positive. Stanford's actually here helping us. Being able to get it, we're getting a lot of information. So it was both a great answer, but also really, really informative. Hopefully, ROR gets selected if we're happy with it as a screener so that we can double down on that investment that's going in there. But.
I was dutifully keeping an eye on Mike and also attended the LCAP meeting and made, made sure he behaved himself at the principal's coffee. I had Orion. Yeah, pretty much, pretty much. I can, and, and he did indeed conduct himself professionally. So those were the two things that I did. Also just had some interesting discussions with folks about last week's artificial intelligence announcements, both in terms of GPT four O, as well as the new Gemini models from Google, kind of back to back and the implications that those might have for education. You know, as artificial intelligence tooling, it continues to increase in quality and sophistication. And as the latency comes down. So you've got in these multimodal models, you can hold up a camera and be talking to it at the same time. Ask it questions about what you see and get back answers and instruction and code and audio, all of that. And so just if you haven't yet taken a look at some of the demos for the GPT four O release last week, it, it is pretty startling what state of the art is. This stuff would have seemed like sci-fi years ago and it's now on us. And I think this could be tremendously powerful as we look to how we can empower kids in our districts to learn. So it's just, that's been really exciting to, to be tracking.
All of mine have been covered, the Kent Awards, the induction colloquium and workforce housing. The only thing I wanted to say, since induction was at Henry Ford, I don't know if you guys all got to see, Jennifer handed out the Mustang Strong, their new newspapers they're doing, which is student design. It's really, really cool. So feel free to pass that out. It, yeah.
Did you make it? Did anyone make it?
No, because we had, I think it was here.
We had the cologne. No, no, you're.
No, that, yeah, accent thing. Yeah, but, and it's really cool. I, I was a student newspaper editor too. So I was super proud of them for.
Wants to start one for Orion. So like I'm.
Yeah.
Can pair now.
My copy. When you can show it to me, yeah. Anything for you, Dr. Big?
No, just in, as I said previously, Anna and I both went to one of the middle schools this past week and introduced a new principal and she spent the whole day there. So it was great. So Bea spent the day there and then came back to the district office and interviewed for VP. Then she came back to the district office and started interviewing for VP, for an assistant principal. So. And about the AI piece, it is interesting. David did send me a, a video to watch and it's something that may help our students, especially if we can't find the tutoring that we need. So something to think about. And I did download the four point O and I, I have it right. It's amazing. It's, it's kind of freaky. It's amazing.
These, these models also are capable of about a hundred different languages. And so for multilingual instruction as well, whether it's Mandarin or Chinese, English, all three. Yeah, it could be very interesting.
Great, thank you. Correspondence. It's been quiet.
A little exhausted into the year.
Yeah.
Did you want to say that with the resolution or no?
I have not.
Okay.
Um, okay. Let's see, possible business items for the future agenda?
You know, not for this year. But maybe for next year, kind of riffing off the artificial intelligence. I do think it would be at some point when staff is ready, it would be an interesting, maybe board study session or at least just a reflection on how staff are using the, are, you know, using artificial intelligence at different levels because teaching or administering or whatever. And you know, just how the board maybe can help support that or whatever. But again, I, I would say that's for whenever, maybe sometime later fall or something like that. And then I did want to mention just on the AI, you know, CSBA also has a task force and they're bringing in all sorts of experts and they've got a few documents right now on their website.
Are they working on policy?
Yeah, and they're working on policies, you know, template policies and other sorts of things. So but like you said, it's moving so fast. It's, and so they're, yeah. But anyway, so you know, at some point, I just think let's add that to the list of possible topics.
And, and I think the other side of that is, there are a lot of people who are knowledgeable about artificial intelligence advances here in Silicon Valley. We're right in the heart of it. And so I, I could imagine some benefit in having short presentations on state of the art in AI and education and options for, for us to go is, is part of that.
Okay. Changes to the calendar. No, no changes. Great. That brings us to the end of our agenda, eight twenty-seven. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to shout out to Henry Ford. There's a number of staff that hung out in our meeting the whole time. So thank you for being here.